Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fields. I'm going to call this meeting order for August twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, the meeting of the Huntington County Community Schools Board of Trustees. And A four roll call, Mrs. Gray.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. McClellan.
Here.
Mr. Melcher.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mrs. Heim is absent. Mr. Carl.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Mr. Trout, are there any revisions to the agenda for A five?
No, there are no revisions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. We'll move on to B one, public comment. Before we get started for the comment, anyone can come up and address the board. We have one signed up so far. You will have three minutes to speak. I will give you a two minute thirty second warning. We show Mr. Miller, Hank Miller, is signed up to speak. Closer.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been up here. As you said, I'm Hank Miller. I have a child at Cresview, child at Huntington North, and I just sent one off to IU Bloomington last week. I'm here because I believe the culture in our schools is failing too many of our kids, including my own. First, I want to start with board accountability. The board itself, I've reached out to my elected representative member, Deb Miller, about school leadership. Her reply to me was like, quote, "I've received your email, and I would give it the time and consideration it deserves," two months ago. Nothing more has been said. That's not my representation. That's a brush off. It's the communication a parent gets from this board, from the school. It doesn't sound like accountability to me. I also want to talk about discipline and equity. Last year, I had a minority child suspended over a poem. No threats, no profanity, just words a teacher didn't like. That experience left such a mark on him, he chose to graduate a year early as a junior in less than the Air Force, not because he wanted to, because he wanted to leave, he wanted out of the school. One of you up here knows that child personally, knows he's on a scale, and knows there was no ill will towards anybody. He was, he was still suspended. Another child that's now is in IU, for her first three years of her career here, she had to use a staff bathroom. Bathroom, she deemed was unsafe, and the chaos was going on. I heard the bathrooms were getting better, but it's still a part of your culture. I have received multiple complaints, pictures, and recordings of an incident that happened at Friday's football game. I'm fortunately part of the press now. Eileen's no longer with us, God bless her. But the theme of the game was blackout, I get it, but then somehow a couple of students took a little too far and took it to blackface. I've talked to multiple students, talked to multiple kids, even my own, and they tell me racial slurs are common in the halls from Cresview to Huntington North. And almost everyone I talk to shrugs, "It's Huntington." I'm sorry, that should never be normal. That should never be accepted. Now I want to move on to leadership and parent voice. And I know it's common, when a parent raises these issues, Superintendent Trout dismisses them, calling them troublemakers and pointing out their faults instead of addressing concerns. Again, not leadership, it's avoidance, which also goes into fiscal responsibility. I have to ask, how much money is being paid to lawyers to fend off parents, instead of fixing the problems that drive these parents here in the first place? That's our tax money being spent to defend failure. And in closing, the board sets the tone for the district. You set the culture, so tonight I'm asking, how will you address racial hostilities in our schools? How will you ensure discipline is fair and not retaliatory? How will you hold Superintendent Trout accountable when he dismisses parents instead of listening? And how will you invest in students, not legal defenses? Board member Miller, you represent me. I'm asking you directly, what actions will you take to make sure the district values every student, protects every student, and listens to every parent? Our kids deserve better than excuses. They deserve leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Would anyone else like to speak to the board this evening? I have a little something I'd like to read to everyone, addressing this incident on Friday night. Over the weekend, a social media post circulated alleging that students in the high school student section engaged in racially inappropriate behavior during Friday evening's football game. Given the seriousness of this allegation, the school immediately conducted a thorough investigation. The review included several steps. The school examined security camera footage of the student section, as well as footage from entrances and exits on the home side of the stadium. They reviewed publicly available photos and videos from local media outlets. They also spoke with members of our administrative team who were stationed at different points throughout the facility. Specifically, Dr. Daggett was standing directly in front of the student section on the track, and Ms. Limraun was stationed in the press box above the student section. By the way, this happens nearly every game. In addition, we contacted individuals who were seated immediately behind the student section to ask about anything they may have observed. None of these steps yielded any evidence of inappropriate conduct by our high school students. The only observation was of a couple of very young children, elementary or early middle school, who had smeared eye black around their faces near the concession stand. We need to be clear. We take allegations of this nature very seriously. Our district is committed to fostering a safe, respectful, and welcoming environment at all school events. We also encourage anyone with a concern to bring it directly to school officials at the time of the event, so it can be addressed immediately. Our administrators and staff are positioned throughout our facilities for exactly this reason, to supervise, provide support, and ensure that our events are hosted in a first-class manner. I'd also like to add that just the mention that this had something to do with our high school is a bad look on our students, and they don't deserve it. Nothing happened for our high school students that was offensive. And yet, a couple of keystrokes on a keyboard onto social media, and it turns into something that it isn't. We're proud of the students we have in this community, in this corporation. They are outstanding group of kids. And we have policies to handle bad behavior. When we see it, and when our administrators see it, they handle it. If we do not know about it, we cannot be expected to handle it. I think that's probably all I better say about it. Moving on to C, special presentation, C one, Board Docs demonstration.
Yes, it was suggested by one of our community members that if we could spend a few minutes at the board meeting to show how one in our community can access Board Docs. And so we have been using Board Docs, Cindy, for twenty-some-plus years within that. So I hope that after this presentation, the community has a better understanding of how they can access so much of our information prior to getting to the board meeting. So up there today, we have Kenny Butler, who is a director of marketing and communications. And to his immediate right is Mike Sumter, who is the director of technology. So gentlemen, we look forward to your presentation today. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Here we go. All right. Yeah, so like you said, we've used Board Docs for longer than I've been in the district. And I just want to show you a few various ways on how you can access it, and when you get into it, what it looks like. The previews that you will see will be based on a desktop preview, but it is pretty translatable on mobile as well. So everything you'll see is in wide format. The basics of what it is, is it's a fairly robust platform that provides a lot of different services. We use it to share out board policy, as well as board meetings and everything that's within there. That can include updates, attachments, everything in and out of that. So it's the main place where we hold our documentation for the board to access, the public to access, in variable, various ways. So we currently have it on our website in a few different areas. We also link it directly and indirectly on social media profiles. It's also in the description of every board meeting. We started doing that maybe two years ago, two and a half years ago or so. So there are various ways to, to access it. From the website, again, it's a little bit more robust, you have more range. The social media profile, it'll send you to the most recent, or the homepage, rather. And then on the YouTube, on YouTube descriptions, it will go to that specific agenda. So that, that agenda for that board meeting. So, and again, that's just revert, that's just simply stating where it's at. So it's how to access it. It can be mobile, it can be desktop, anything with a screen, you can find it. So here on the website, it's kind of hard to see here, but circled at the bottom in gold, that is just under our banner currently. So that, that gives you a direct access to the public version of Board Docs. I will state that that section there, it has up to ten quick action items. So it does rotate through those every three to five seconds, I believe. So if you go to the homepage, you don't initially see it in that quick action item, it's because it's going, scrolling through those top ten items that we've detected. So that is one way. The next, next area, you'll, you'll see, under departments, you can go to school board, and you can access it there as well, along with another laundry list of items. So if you go to the next one there, on the school board page, you will see just above these items, the two most recent board meetings, direct link to YouTube livestream, and then below that is a collection of resources for viewers to access. Up at the top, you'll see, you'll have your agenda and direct to policies. So it's just a direct link to those two items in Board Docs. On Facebook, this, this is where, where I mean indirect. Facebook, you can have a limited, limited amount of links, so I've opted to go directly to the website. And then the second main link actually goes to what's called Linktree. Linktree essentially allows you to have multiple links in one link, and that, and it lands right there, and I'll show you here in a minute. Instagram, for the younger demographic, typically on the next slide, will show you that same, it's similar. You can have a limited amount of links, and it's, it's there directly under the website where you can access Linktree as well. So it's indirect, but it's still there, just to provide more, more access. YouTube, this will show you where it's at in the board meeting. So it's a little finicky. I don't really have the, the means to change how it's set up. But under every video, there's the opportunity for you, creators or moderators, to create a description of the video. So what we've started doing, again, around two-ish years or so ago, I provide links to our socials. And then right under that is the direct link to the board, board agenda for that specific meeting. And additional notes, we've also started timestamping all the YouTube meetings. So what that will do in the description, I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't provide a screenshot for this. But if you scroll down just a little bit more, every agenda item is time stamped. So what that means is you can, you can go directly to that section of the video. So if you only want to see item D four, you just click on D four, and it will go directly to that. So you don't have to scroll back and forth and all that. So the aim there is just to provide more access, a little bit easier, a little bit quicker, rather than trying to scroll in and out, it will go directly to that. So in the top right, it'll show you where the description is. There's an arrow, area, or arrow, rather, that says more. That's the, that's the quickest way, unfortunately, to access the details of the video in the description. Honestly, I wish there was just a button that was easier to find, but that's how YouTube has set that up. So that's, that's another way to access the Board Docs. The next slide, I believe, is Linktree. So again, in our socials, you will see various links and resources that we'd like to promote and share with the public. And down just buff, below the fun pictures of the kids there, you will see a direct link to Board Docs. So it's also there. Again, it's indirect, it's not as easy to access there, but it, it's there. So when you're, once you're into Board Docs, again, this is a preview on desktop, so it's going to look wider. Just imagine on phone, it's just going to look more, a little more narrow and taller. So it's a little bit different on how to access. This is the main page. So on the main or homepage, whatever Board Docs titles it, you will see upcoming events. In our case, we use, again, Board Docs for those meetings. So you'll see the schedule there, and then you'll see all the information for board members, et cetera, on the left. On the top right, that's where you're going to navigate the features that we utilize. Meetings is one. So if you click on, I believe it's on the next slide, Cindy. Yeah, if you click on meetings, it will show you in chronological order all the meetings. So you'll see the, in the white, that will preview the recent meetings that were, were currently set. And then you can actually click from year to year to access all the, the previous meetings within there. And then once you click on the meeting, in the next slide, it will show, you can actually, you can access the agenda. And then there's a video link, once it's actually uploaded to YouTube. So we actually reverse it as well to provide additional access to the livestream. So once the, the stream is finished, then we go back and republish the, the direct link to the livestream. So you can get it one of both ways, before or after. And then the next one, I believe I put, yeah, if you open up the agenda, you'll see it expand, and you'll get all the, the items there. And if, not every item has a, a document attached to it, but if there's a document that's, needs to be shared, it will be in the description of said agenda item. And you can open it up, and then typically it's a PDF, so it's, it's readable to, to all. So, and then next is policies. Policies, you'll see just right, to the right of the meetings, there's a little gold, gold arrow there. And then from there, it, it orders the policies by number, just to keep it succinct. So you'll see a preview there. And then next, if you click on a specific policy number, if you scroll through there, you'll see it provides the policy number and then the base description of it, and you can actually expand that. And behind there, you'll see there's a full description of said policy. You can also search by policy number. I will be totally honest, when you go to search for a specific, what I would say like a keyword in Board Docs, it has some troubles laying that out efficiently. I do know that Diligent has other offerings that we, we could, we could digest later into, and how to make it more efficient there, but that's all on Board, Board Docs end. Either way, it's, it's all there. It's fairly cut and dried, nothing super fancy, but it's, it's all there. So what's next? We, we aim to continue to provide multiple access points. Currently, what you are previewing here is where we have it. But we're, we're trying to always improve and, and dabble in different, different ideas to make really all of our information accessible in some form or fashion. The, the new website that is being built, built out by yours truly, it's, it's taken a while, but I'm, I'm working on it, trust me. I'm trying to find ways to make our most common or most popular points more accessible. So more, more, more areas that are easier to see for the average user all the time. One idea that we currently have, especially for livestream and Board Docs, is to have a floating tab. So we'll actually navigate with you wherever you are on the website, so it's always available, no matter, no matter where you're at. We're also integrating it into our mailers via QR code. And then on parent square, I'm working out on building templates. So our staff members, when they create a post, there will be automatic links for them to, well, they're already be there for them. And one of those items would be Board Docs, livestream access, website access, so on and so forth. So we continue to, to, to collect that data, per se, see where the engagement's at, and try to, to make it more reachable and more approachable for everybody. So.
So Kenny, just, just for clarification, like, for example, for tonight's school board meeting and public content, we have several attachments on several different agenda items. What you're saying is the community can actually go on and see all the attachments that the board's looking at, and then public content prior to the board meeting itself.
Correct.
And then I just want the public to know that, so like, for example, right there, that's straight off of tonight's school board meeting. If there's an attachment, it's in public content, the public can absolutely view it before the board ever makes any decisions on it from that standpoint.
Yep.
When is the agenda posted?
Sorry?
When is that agenda posted, then, for everybody to access?
The agenda posted, so there's a time, timeframe for everybody to get them lined up and, and, and there. Cindy, you could probably correct me if I'm wrong. Is it the, I'll, yeah, go ahead.
So when do you post agenda?
We, we try to post it by Wednesday, the Wednesday prior to a Monday meeting. By law, we have to follow the open door law within forty-eight hours, business hours.
Are all the attachments included on the first posting of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can correct me if I'm wrong, too. If there's a revision, that might, does that contradict? I'm not a hundred percent. I'm not a hundred percent sure. That's not my realm entirely, to be honest.
Sure. If we bring revisions to the board, the board would vote to accept or deny those revisions. And if there are revisions and there's an attachment that goes with it, those will be loaded in just right prior to the meeting startings.
So the point I'm trying to make, I don't know how much more transparent this board can possibly be by posting all of this to the community days in advance prior to the board meeting.
Yeah. And, and, and in post, I'll be honest with, with timestamping. I do go to, go home and go to bed after I eat, after a board meeting. So I don't get the, I don't get the timestamps done right away. My, my personal goal is within 24, 48 hours, just depending on what the next day brings. But in pre, like before the meeting, it's all there. And if, if it's not, then it's, it's because of a, an error on our website, a broken link or something like that. But with Board Docs, that, that hasn't really happened. That's more outside entities where we have issues with links.
So to tie this all up then, you're going to be posting this presentation then for the public, right?
I mean, it will automatically, once the live stream stops, it's, they have a parameter of time depending on the length of the live stream on when it automatically uploads. But once it's automatically uploaded, then I, I go through and, and share various things if needed. Yep.
Go ahead.
I will attach this presentation after the board meeting. Usually the next day I attach all presentations so that they're in there for the public to see a second time. And with the, the video portion, if you want to see the video and the sound, if you go to an agenda item, there's a little film strip icon near the top. You can click on that little film strip icon and it will play just that clip of that agenda item as well.
So in the box there, just above the area, arrow, you'll see three icons. Once the video is, and once the video is tied to it, just to the right, there's that fourth icon. Again, it looks like an old film strip. You would click on that and then it would provide, it's a, it's a picture in picture is what it's called. So it actually, it doesn't take you out of Board Docs, which is kind of convenient. It actually opens up a little window and it will play right there. So you can still see all the other agenda items, so on and so forth. It does, it takes a little bit of time to load that stuff up once everything's timestamped.
So Kenny, thank you. Mike, thank you. You guys were extremely thorough. And again, if anybody in the public has, ever has any questions about how to access this, they can always contact us at the administrative center and we'll direct them to this presentation here today. But I appreciate it gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks guys. Moving on to D, D1, elementary I learn, I read academic data presentation 2024, 2025. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Going to share with you our 2025 I read. In the PowerPoint you'll see there are percentages by school. This is a time in the program. I think I'm the, the highlight for the program. This is a time where we can do shout outs, claps, wave a hanky, say amen, whatever you choose to do here, because this is a celebration. Truly a celebration because our kids, our teachers, administrators and our kiddos have been working very, very hard. And we're excited to report to you that our percentage right now, our district average was 88.7% proficient. State average was 87.3%. You can see on the graph there on the first slide. And our percentage last year in 2024 was 84.4%. So to gain three to five percentage points in one year is a huge gain. And so my hat's off to our teachers and students for doing an awesome job. A year ago at this time, if a school district or a school was at 70% or below, they would have to join a literacy cadre for extra support, coaching. Obviously for Huntington schools, you can see that that's not the case here. That, that did not happen. You know, our goal has always been, and it's got to continue to be, and research will tell you this, that our kids have got to be reading at or above grade level by the time they finish third grade. And if they don't, we may have lost them for their career. So you just let that soak in for just a second, a third grader. And so that's why K2 instruction is so, so, so important. And, and that next slide, Cindy, if you'll go to the next slide. Again, we set a goal as a district, one of many districts across the state of Indiana that said, you know what? We're going to reach that 95% of our kids being proficient in reading by 2027. Well, we're on our way. We're gaining, we're gaining ground. We're working hard at this and I believe truly that we're going to achieve that. One of the spring boards was, and you approved for us and I so appreciate your support. The next slide Cindy talks about our summer I read program. Every district in the state, it was required of us to have summer I read. Wasn't an option. You had to have a summer remediation program. Ours went from June 9th to June 27th, ran for 15 days, Monday through Friday, eight to noon. We fed them breakfast, we fed them lunch. Transportation was provided. We had 18 teachers that you allowed us to have. And the great part about summer I read was we did not have to conform to the 15 to one ratio, student to teacher ratio, because it was summer I read. That allowed us to have small groups of anywhere from five, six to eight students with one teacher with a laser focus on specifically what each student needed. It was precise, it was personalized. And that was for that 15 days. We had 63 second graders that we identified that were at risk on the spring I read test. And we had 34 third graders that did not pass that we brought through the, the summer I read program. Next slide. Next steps, what's that look like for us? Continue the precision focus on phonics instruction, especially K2. This is critical to continue our hard work that we're doing with that currently. Continue win time. 30 years ago, this was just small groups. It's nothing new guys. It's just what students need currently right now in flexible skill grouping. And I'll show you later with our I learn, the parent report and this, and the teacher report that we're going to get, it's going to show you specifically how that looks for I learn. But for I read, continue Orton Gillingham. Orton Gillingham's been back, has been around since I think the 1930s. And it's basically that kinesthetic auditory visual learning. If you ever had to draw letters in the sand or in shaving cream, that's it. Tapping out syllables, you know, and just doing that and doing it with relentless focus for those kiddos that are, that are struggling. The Hegarty curriculum, it's a comprehensive program for pre-K and third grade. Systematic, explicit, deals with phonics, phonemic awareness, that blending, segmenting of words. So critical in how kids manipulate those sounds. Last bullet point. Continue to promote with our parents, the need to read and talk with their child on a daily basis that stimulates and strengthens a child's language and literacy skills. So AJ, that's nothing new. Guys, we retained four of our third graders after summer I read. After all the work, after all the effort and time, we retained four kiddos. These are my kids. These are my kids academically and, and we take that very, very seriously. And so now I'm, if for any K2 parents that are out here that might be listening to this board meeting, I need you now more than ever. I need you to be engaged. And to those parents that are engaged, those parents that do work with us, boy, hats off. I need more of you. But right now I need those parents to be engaged with our kids to read with them 20 to 30 minutes a night. Here's the research, says that 85 to 90% of brain growth occurs in the first five years of life. I get them when they're five. They come to us when they're five. And that, in that first five years, it affects not only the cognitive skills, but they also the emotional development. So parents, I need you. I need you to partner with us. I need you to partner with your school, your teachers, come to parent conferences, find out what you can do to help your child succeed because they've got to learn how to read. And it's got to happen before they end their third grade career. This is a challenge. I can tell you right now that I'm working on a kindergarten letter that's required by the state that goes out to every kindergarten family. And it tells them and, and shares with them what we're going to be doing to help support their kids as kindergartners and first graders and second graders, first graders and second graders. But to let them know that when their child gets to third grade, if they do not pass I read, and we've given them multiple opportunities in second grade, multiple opportunities in third grade, if they still do not pass, they will be retained. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you right now, I never thought we would come to this. Seven years when the legislator, seven years ago, legislature, legislators came out and said this was going to happen and then it went away. Now it has come back. So this is a partnership. And so we need everybody on board locking arms to make sure that our kids are successful. So let me share. I learn, you can read through their results. Here's the overall I learned summary report for us is third, fourth, has broken down third, fourth and fifth grade. You can see that the, the blue is our ELA district average. The red is our ELA state average for each grade level. Math is in the yellow for district and green is 49 or, our math average is in the green. So you can see where we're at third grade, you can see fourth grade, you can see fifth grade. We're either close to that state average or we're above it. So again, our kids that are working hard, teachers, it's a lift. It's, it's heavy. It's, it's hard work. The next slide Cindy is just a breakdown by ELA. I won't go through that. You can see that. The next one is a breakdown by math. The next slide Cindy, the, the science and social studies, you can see district for fourth grade science was 45, state was 43. State average was 43 and then for fifth grade 38. So you can see the district and state percentages there for science and social studies. I will tell you that we are in the process of our science adoption K12 across the district. This year, we hope to bring to you at each level, recommendations at the board meeting in December. And would, that would be implemented then, a new science curriculum for the 26, 27 school year. Our hope is too, to bring and begin the process of science adoption in the fall of 2026 for K12 with a recommendation coming to the board, December of 2026 for implementation 2027, 2028. So next steps, next slide Cindy is I learn next steps. And we'll bring closure to this. Continuing to refine our common informative assessments to ensure alignment with I learn standards and assessment expectations. This year is a pilot year as Lynn and Chuck have already shared with you in the secondary level. This is a pilot year, so there's a lot of things that we have learned. Strategically now using, utilizing our win time, that's worked well in our literacy block. Now making sure that we're using that in our math block to provide targeted, data-driven instruction and intervention. Increase rigor and questioning. Jay, why would you put that on there? Embed higher order thinking skills, DOK level, depth of knowledge is, that's what it stands for. And I could do a little in-service right now. Depth of knowledge chart, levels two and three into daily instruction. They're writing the tests and assessments that our kiddos are taking in depth of knowledge three and sometimes even four. If our instruction is at level two and three, what's going to happen? We're not going to match the rigor that our kiddos will be faced with when they sit down to take an assessment, whatever it might be, if I learn, I read. So our instruction has got to match that is, that assessment level. And so working on that. You allowed us to hire Lauren Hoag as a professional development coordinator in elementary. She has been out to every building. She's meeting and greeting teachers. This week she is modeling in classrooms, a lesson for some teachers, has been a huge support and teachers have been very receptive as well as administrators with her coaching and, and her classroom modeling. Utilize IDO, I learn student performance reports from each checkpoint to inform our instructions, instruction, monitor student progress, adjust those interventions. And I'll share with you, the next slide is going to share with you what that looks like. But then empowering and equipping, building leadership. At our teams meetings, making sure that principals have the tools in their toolboxes that supports the, the learning so that they can go back into their buildings and make that happen with their teachers in their collaboration and coaching that they do at their grade level teams. And that's a key piece of this and Lauren's a key piece of that. Our first checkpoint window is coming up September the 15th through November the 14th. Their checkpoints are untimed. Math, there's about 20 to 25 items, takes about 25 to 40 minutes. ELA will be about the same, about 20 to 25 items, 30 to 45 minutes. So if there's ever time to get excited, I think the next slide, well, there's a couple of the times to get excited. We got excited early on, but the next slide, this is going to be the student report that we're going to get. This is a draft that they have shared with us of a student report that parents will get and teachers and administrators will get. So it's going to identify the proficiency level of how they did on checkpoint one. You're on that slide Cindy. Okay. Turn to the next, last slide. Here is a blueprint of a student. And so it gives the item level, it gives the academic standard and the performance lever, level descriptor. And it shows you right there, there's your lesson plan for win time. Boy, you don't have to create it. You don't have to make it up teachers. It's right here. Finally, the state's listening to us. Thank you. Wave a hanky. Somebody say amen. Finally, because it was always guesswork. It was guesswork. Well, I think they might cover these standards or there were essential standards or critical standards. Now they've laid it out for us. And so now when the, we should get the results in 24 hours after they take the assessment checkpoint one, here's what we're going to get, a blueprint now of how we can run small group instruction to be precise and personalized for every student. Somebody say amen, amen. I'll say it. That's what we're looking for. This will be huge moving forward to help our students succeed. So what a privilege and honor it is to serve in the elementary area. Wanted to share a snapshot with you. We do get excited down the elementary and so we're excited about where we're headed and, and the work that, the hard work, seriously, that administrators, teachers and our students have put forth. Really proud of them. So thank you for letting me share.
Yeah. Jay, this is really exciting news. There's been a lot of hard work and effort put into this. And this is, goes without saying, but Jay's leadership is essential component in this piece of it too. We are blessed Jay to have you in that leadership role, doing that. You drive it and you drive it pretty hard. But I will tell you, the results of our students and teachers is just, the growth that we are getting is absolutely incredible. Some of that can be hard to understand, but you can't argue with the three to 4% growth consistently year after year that we're now showing. And board, you need to be commended because if you look at this as a composite of all the last two school board meetings of what you've seen in elementary, middle school and high school, this community has a lot to be proud of. It, it is, you know, you think about, we start with the I read three scores and we end with SATs. And I don't care what benchmark you look at. I don't care what components you want to pull out. You're seeing growth, consistent growth year after year. And nothing warms my heart like going to a football game and parents come up to me and talk to me about how grateful they are that their students go to our school district. And one of the large reasons for that is, is because of the academic achievement that's going on in this place. And so to Chuck and to Jay and to our administrators and our teachers and our staff, I say thank you. We are blessed in this district to have adults who passionately care about their kids. They want to see them do well. And then when you see the results post-high school with what so many of our kids are doing, that also is very incredible. And it's hats off to you as a board, to the leadership that we have, that I had a, a grandparent over the weekend tell me, John, we choose to send our kids here to school because, and they listed off, and one of these was the academic excellence that you heard here from Jay and Chuck the last two weeks. So gentlemen, I say thank you to board. Thank you. This is, this is not easy work. It's easy to be criticized for that, but the results speak for themselves day in and day out. So thank you.
I was going to echo that a little bit. I had the pleasure Friday at the ISBA board of directors meeting to have Dr. Jenner there. And she spent the first part of her conversation talking about I read and all of the data that's coming in. And she said, if you get a presentation, you must commend your staff because numbers are all up over the state and anybody that's above the state average should be commended. And I wanted, so I'm going to send that to you. Also was going to say that to Chuck later, but you know, she commended everyone for doing the great growth, but she says, don't let. the great growth, but she says, don't let the foot off the gas. And she reiterated several things that you said about making sure to continue reading with your children because she, she had the numbers and she has that data and it's very powerful data. If we don't get them in third grade, we lose them. So it's a hard decision and I feel for you about those four kids that we had to hold back, but if we get, can get them now, we're setting them up for academic success in the future. So continue to keep that up. And Cindy, go back to the 2025 I read pass rate by school slide. I want to call out one thing for you Jay. One school almost at ninety-five. Don't let the foot up there either because I'd like to have, I'd like to be one of those school boards that got to mention the fact that they had a hundred percent pass rate. I know four one community schools had that. I want to be on that list too. So I know we have some that are working on that and I want to see the continued growth, but you almost got one there, we just got to get the rest of them there. So keep up the good work man.
Thank you.
Jay, congratulations. This is excellent news. It takes so much work and so much effort and focused instruction and discussion and leadership. This is amazing and if our legislature would move to universal preschool, we could probably get to the next step. That's just my sidebar comment here, but congratulations Jay to all the teachers, all the staff, parents, students, amen.
Thank you Deb.
Thank you Mrs. Miller. Anyone else?
Thank you Mr. Peters. You are an amazing educator. We are so fortunate. Moving on, item D two Huntington University HCCSC nursing clinical affiliation agreement. Yes, board in your packets, in your school board packets you have here this evening to tag team on what Kenny Butler talked about earlier. This is in the public content, the agreement between the clinical nursing students and at Huntington University and I'm seeking your approval of that document.
Thank you Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion for this item.
I make a motion to recommend the approval of the Huntington University and Huntington County Community School Corporation affiliation agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Thank you Mr. Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Mr. Melcher. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Motion passes six zero. Moving on to D three, Bowen Health Services and HCCSC agreement twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Trout.
Yes, this is for skill, uh, skills coaches, which are essential part of our regular school day. Again, this is found in the public content and I'm just asking for your approval of this agreement.
Thank you Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion for this item.
Motion to approve the Bowen Health Services and HCCSC agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six for skills coaches as presented.
Thank you Mr. Melcher. Is there a second? Thank you Mr. McClellan. Any questions or comments before we vote? Quickly, skills coaches, who, what do they provide?
Jay, do you want to talk to this about what skill coaches provide because this is primarily in the elementaries?
Students that need extra support, could be behaviorally, emotionally, and so that skills coach could be right there with that student, providing one-on-one service with that student.
Thank you Mr. Peters. Anything else before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote on the motion. Motion passes six zero. Move on to D four, Bowen Health and HCCSC Student Assistant Program Agreement.
Yes, the last of the agreements that we're seeking this evening for your approval is this is a student assistance program, again, providing supports for our students throughout the district and so we're just seeking your approval of this agreement.
Thank you Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Motion to approve the Bowen Health and HCCSC Student Assistant Program Agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Thank you Mr. Melcher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Mr. Wall. Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote on the motion. Motion passes six zero. Move on to E one through nine, the consent agenda. Mr. Trout.
Yes, again to piggyback on Mr. Butler's presentation, if our board, if, I just want you to see that in items two through nine in the public content, everything that you're voting on this evening has been out there to the public since last Wednesday. So all the attachments that are there. I'm going to draw your attention to number five and six. I'm going to ask Mr. Peters to explain that a little bit for you about the adjunct teacher agreement and the mentor teacher agreement. So Jay, I'll turn those two over to you.
Thank you Mr. Trout. We have hired Brianna Kiefer. She is the second teacher in our applied skills program at Salomonie. They're dividing the students up, they have a fairly large class and so they'll have a K-two teacher and a three-five teacher. And so Brianna is going to also be one of those, one of our teachers that will be in the IWO step-up program for adjunct teachers and so that'll be our sixth teacher currently right now in the district that's going to be a part of the IWO step-up program and, and you have her MOU there in her agreement. Her mentor will be Crystal Streeter and Crystal will be working with Brianna to help mentor her as a part of the IWO step-up program and so we bring those to you tonight for your approval.
Also number seven is just an additional officer for Huntington North High School lunch supervision and then we continue to be, I continue to be amazed at the donations that we receive from our community. They're great partners and we appreciate that. So school board, I'm asking for your approval of consent agenda items E one through nine.
Thank you Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent items E one through E nine.
Thank you Mr. Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Mrs. Miller. Any questions or comments, would anybody like to pull anything from the agenda, consent agenda?
Please pull number seven. I needed something.
Mr. McClellan liked to pull number seven. Wouldn't anyone like to make a motion to pull that item? I think we need to vote on that, don't we?
Yes, you need to vote on that.
So why don't we take care of the consent agenda items first and then we'll come back.
First and then come back?
Yeah.
I think, do we have to vote to pull it though?
You have to vote. If Gary wants to pull an agenda item, you need to, number seven, you deal with that one first, I believe. Yes.
I think so too. I think we need to pull it.
Yes.
Separately.
Separately. Vote on the, yeah.
Yes.
Vote on numbers one through nine minus seven, once you approve seven being pulled from that and then we vote on seven by itself. Okay? So first we need a motion and a second to pull agenda item number seven of consent agenda.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to pull consent agenda item number seven from the list.
Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Wall. Is there a second for that? Thank you Mrs. Miller. Any questions or comments before we vote on that? Let's vote on.
Okay, hang on a second. Cindy's got to catch up with us here. Cindy's got to change a couple of things. You ready?
Item seven from the.
That's correct.
Correct.
Motion passes six zero. Item seven is pulled from the consent agenda. I'll now entertain a motion, reference agenda items one through six and eight and nine.
So moved.
Thank you Mr. Melcher. Is there a second? Thank you Mrs. Miller. Any questions or comments before we vote on these eight items? Hearing none, we'll vote on consent agenda items one through six and eight and nine.
While we're working through that vote, I had a motion to approve the consent as presented. I'm going to rescind that motion because we still have that motion sitting on the table. And it was seconded, so whoever seconded that needs to pull that because we still have that original motion that I made to approve.
I don't think we got a second. I think we stopped.
We did not get a second on that? I thought Deb seconded it, but maybe.
We're going to let that one die on the vine.
Okay, then we'll let that one die as long as we're good. I just want to make sure we didn't have an open motion sitting out there.
Okay, the motion passes five with one abstention, five zero with one abstain. Move on to item E seven.
Yeah, okay.
I'll entertain a motion for that item.
So moved.
Thank you Mr. Melcher. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Mr. Wall. Any questions or comments before we vote on item seven? Motion passes four zero with two abstaining. Moving on to F one, approval of timetable for 2025 GO bonds and authorized notice of hearing.
Yes, board, in your board packet, what you have there is a proposed timeline for the 2025 geo bond or bonds, okay? And to authorize notice of hearing to be published in the Indiana Plain Dealer on Wednesday, September tenth, 2025 in preparation for the September twenty-second, 2025 project hearing. So I just want you to understand that tonight, all we're doing in preparation before September twenty-fifth is approving this timeline so we can, we can move forward. I'll draw your attention to if we follow this timeline is that you see what the board meeting on October the twenty-seventh and the items that will be addressed there and then you also see the bond sale on November the sixth. Okay, so we're, just for clarification, we're just approving the timetable this evening. The work that you did at the work session last Thursday gave us some great direction and so we're going to be preparing all of that in this process also, okay, for final approval. Okay? So I'm just seeking your recommend, I'm just seeking your approval.
Thank you Mr. Trout. Would anyone like to make a motion approving this timetable?
Make a motion to recommend the approval of the timetable, timetable for the 2025 GO bond and authorization of notice of hearing as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you Mr. McClellan. Any questions or comments before we vote? Motion passes six zero. Moving on to F two, July 2025 financial reports, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, President Allen, Superintendent Trout, members of the board. If you don't mind, I'd like to add a caveat if someone wasn't listening to the work session also with that general obligation bond for 2025, that would be without raising taxes. So that is for debt that's falling off and us being able to do some of the things on our facility study and knocking those out one by one by utilizing our debt service fund without raising taxes. So this evening, I'd like to go on and talk about the July financials that you're accustomed to see in monthly and we start with the education fund. With this being July, covering July, we usually look at, okay, this is a little over halfway through the year. So then what we focus on is the percent of the year expended, which is about fifty-eight percent when you think of all the days up to July. These budgets run January through December each year, not fiscal year or school year. So the state hasn't got those conjoined together for us in schools, but I just remind the public of how our budgets run for the calendar year, not school year. For the education fund, you'll see all the information on the left-hand side on the first column. That is our budget order, that's our certified budget order for our anticipated revenues and our expenditures, our approval to spend that appropriation. Then in the middle, you'll see the information for the particular month, which is July in this case, and then you'll see the year-to-date actual for January through July on your charts there. To the right, you'll see the same type of information, but in graph form. So at the top, you'll see the percents of budgets by the categories and I always like to bring to light, this is the education fund, which stands for exactly what it is, educating our students. So over ninety-some percent is straight, is aimed straight at salaries and benefits. So that is by design from the state that developed these different funds and what we have the, the availability to spend those funds on. Then the charts right below that, you'll see the revenues and the expenditures on the left side of each graph, you'll see the appropriation or the anticipated revenue or appropriations that we are granted and then the yellow you'll see goes in line with the numbers on the left. That shows you how much of the year-to-date that we're spending or have received for this fund. We're approximately just shy of forty-nine percent on our budget that's expended for this time of year, which is good since, okay, we're already halfway through the year, we're into July. So that is by design, so we're doing, we're right on target with our budgets and our spending. And then also down at the bottom, you'll see some miscellaneous notes that we like to put in there to remind you certain times of the year where we have three payroll months. So you'll see that on the next months in August is one of those months. So if you're comparing month to month, you'll see that August, of course, would be higher due to three payrolls in that month and like reiterating that over ninety to ninety-five percent of ours is salary and benefits. So you'll see that hike in August when we cover those. And then also it shows our year-to-date total for our education to operations fund transfer that we're allowed to do by law. So that has that note on there also that we did in June of three point one million dollars from our education fund to our operations fund to cover those expenditures that when they dissolve the old general fund and operations fund, transportation fund and bus replacement fund and created the education fund and the operations fund, that we had some. that we had some categories that were moved from the old general fund into our operations fund, but they did not split our funding. And they still have not, and that's been since 2019. So, um, in Indiana code, it allows us to transfer money from that education fund where those receipts come into to our operations fund to cover those expenditure categories that were moved to that operations fund without the revenue moving with them. So next you'll see, um, our next fund is our debt service fund. You usually see action in this fund, um, twice a year in June and December, and that is when we're paying for our debt, just like we talked about earlier, our general obligation bonds, our leases. We get our revenue twice a year in, um, majority is in June and December, and we also owe those, um, amortization schedules, those bills, just like your house payment, and that's two times a year. So you'll see in there, just to bring note, you'll see the budget expended a little over 50%. Usually, it's right at 50% this time of year. The reason why it's at 54%, um, give you a little history lesson. Last year, when we did the budget and approved the appropriation for the budget, we were in the middle of doing our 2024 general obligation bond. Originally, for that general obligation bond, we were going to do a million dollars. Instead, we end up doing 1.75 million, and that was after the budget was already approved. What does that mean, Becky? That means that our appropriation that was approved during our budget order process was less than what we needed. What does that mean for this year? You will see in the next couple board meetings, an additional appropriation coming out for debt service. That does not mean higher taxes. That does not mean anything extra. It just gives us extra appropriation to be able to make those payments, and it comes straight from the cash balance. So, um, every year, we have to have the, the approval to spend, which is the appropriation that was, um, approved. And if it's not suffice, then we have to go back to the process and bring it back to the board for that additional appropriation process. Like I said, that's just for us to be able to pay the December payment because that payment switched after we had the budget already completed by the time we sold those bonds from last year. It does not add anything to tax rates or anything like that. It comes straight from the cash balance. So next we have our, um, operations fund, and this is similar to our education fund, just on the flip side. Education fund is straight toward educating students. Operations is the overall operations of the district. It has, um, a lot of the central office people in it. It has transportation in it, custodial, maintenance, technology, all those different overall um, operation, operational departments that, um, come out of that fund. So in this fund, unlike the education fund, it has about 39 to 40% of salaries and benefits for those different departments I talked about. The other 60% is capital, technology, utilities, those type of things, um, that come out of this fund also. Down at the bottom, you see there where it has outstanding encumbrances of $3.4 million. Just to make note, that is a large amount due to the fact that we're still on hold from our bus purchases from last year. So we've encumbered those dollars, which saved that appropriation, but we're waiting for all those buses to come in before we, um, move that purchase order to an actual expenditure. So it'll move from down at the bottom and it'll move up to the expenditures when, um, all those come in and we pay for all those buses. So that is the big part of that, and then some capital outlay also. And last but not least, we have our rainy day fund, and, um, this, you'll see this will be the same for the rest of the year. This was left over from 2024 when the board approved, um, dollars for the administration building. So what you see left over in '25, um, for the year-to-dates were, um, outstanding purchase orders that were outstanding at the end of 2024 and weren't paid till 2025. It did not take any extra money. It did not take additional appropriation. It has the original appropriation from 2024 that was carried into 2025. So you will see that same fund balance for the remainder of the year, um, as no expenditures will come out for the remainder of this 2025 calendar year. Now, that's a lot of information. Um, we'll move on. Um, we also have comparison reports that we do for you. First is our education fund, where we do a comparison, um, per month for you, so you can see over the last, um, six to, um, six years or so. And you'll see for July there, um, we're right on target, and you can look at, I always go to the right-hand side and look at our cash balance to see how we're doing and how it compares to other years. We are right on target for, um, our education fund and almost close to what we were in January. So that's a good sign to the board and to the public that we are balancing our revenues and expenditures in our education fund.
You know, Becky, one of the data points I was just pointing to Tim about, if you look at July of 20, uh, July 20, you know, you're talking about 5.8 compared to this year of 16. I'm telling you, board, you are the most fiscally responsible, uh, people. I, I can honestly say to you that we have, that I have dealt with through the years. Um, you are tremendous stewards of the finances for this community. It's, it's just absolutely amazing when you look at that growth over those years. We don't want to have too big of a cash balance, which we're going to talk to you about this winter. But on the other hand, look how fiscally responsible you are, uh, in the same process. So I didn't want that to go by, Becky, without saying that.
And also in conjunction with that, Mr. Trout, is at the same time being fiscally responsible, we're also being able to be very competitive with our wages, with our teachers over the last, um, couple of years when we did our two-year agreement, and now we're up again for our two-year agreement. So this is all good news that we're able to offer competitive wages along with being fiscally responsible in the same.
Yeah, because a lot of our colleagues across the state are not that fortunate, and the reason I'm drawing your attention to that, uh, balance is, is that I think we can be fair to our entire staff again over the next two years this year, where many of our colleagues across the state would not be able to say that. So, again, congratulations to all of you for your responsibility and how fiscally you're, you know, sharp that you're running this district. So thank you.
And then next, we have the same comparison for our operations fund that you're used to seeing, and then you're, there you'll see, um, July, where we're very consistent with our, um, cash balances also compared to the years, which is by design because we make sure that, one, you know, we're purchasing our buses, we're doing our capital projects plan, uh, that, that we have approved and doing all those regular repair and maintenance. So we're right on, on target for our operations fund with the comparisons also. And that is what I have for you this evening in your financials. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have or ask for your approval as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments for, for Becky?
No, as usual, she answered my questions before I got a chance to answer them, so life is good.
That's fantastic. Anybody else? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion, uh, reference this item.
Make a motion to recommend, uh, recommend to approve the 20, July 2025 financial report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. I already asked about questions and comments, so we'll vote on the motion. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We're going to move on to item G one, special update policies. Mr. Trout.
Okay, we had talked about last, two weeks ago at our last school board meeting, due to all of the legislative changes that occurred during last legislative session. We had our first reading two weeks ago or so on all of those policies and administrative guidelines that are listed. I know I was sounding like a broken record, but I want to assure our community, again, this is all in the public content. It's been there the last two board meetings, um, ahead of time with this, but board, if you would approve, this is our second and final reading. If you approve this, uh, this evening, we will be absolutely up to speed and current with all the last round of legislative changes that occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion, uh, reference the special update policies.
Motion to approve special update, July 2025 policies and administrative guidelines as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Any questions or comments prior to voting?
On, on this, on what we're doing with our policy updates and everything, I appreciate what we're doing. Um, this has probably been one of the things that I've gotten the most questions about, uh, and out in the public. I know during our first readings, they're all posted online.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as far as that goes, I, I, I would love to see more of a, a conversation about it and, and reading what we're changing. That's one of the things that they've been asking for on public transparency, uh, from, from people I've talked to. And I know that we've just got updated with everything with the state. Sometimes I think like this, this, right tonight, we've got 30 different items that we're approving. That's a lot to get through. Uh, I know with my work schedule, I have a hard time getting through all these and, and reading them. As we move forward, I would like to see this limited and actually read out what we're going to be discussing. Um, that's my comment.
What I would suggest, Aaron, is, is, um, if, if there are any here that you receive questions about that you want to discuss publicly, I'd be more than willing to do that during this section of the board meeting. So if you had a specific number, you had numbers or specific ones that you wanted to have us go over publicly, that would be just fine with me. I, I'd be more than willing to do that. We are just on the end of all these updates. We have done quite a few updates over the last year and a half to two years, and, and I'm glad to announce that we are very close to being caught up. But in the future, if you have any of these that you would like to, to us discuss, if you would get ahold of me before the board meeting, I will make sure that we have those discussions on whatever ones that you, that, that anybody would like to talk about, so, okay?
It's, it's not so much from my understanding, but, uh, a lot of the public that have asked me about it, um, they don't even, it's hard, like, we did the presentation tonight, it's hard for them to access it, and I think you guys have done a, a, a great job of trying to get us up to date. Um, but that's just, you know, some of the feedback that I'm getting.
Well, that's perfect, and, and better yet, have them contact me. I'll bring them in. I would love to sit down and talk to them about it. So if, if they would, uh, anybody like to come in and sit down with me, it'd be Cindy and myself, and I'll answer any questions they have about any of them, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Anyone else? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote on the motion. Motion passes five one. Moving on to item G two, policy 7455, accounting system for capital assets. Mr. Trout.
Yes, again, this is second reading. Uh, the primary difference in this is raising the threshold from $5,000 to 10. Uh, and this just brings us in line with what, um, our recommendations have been from outside counsel, so I'm just recommending your approval of this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Motion to approve policy 7455, accounting system for capital assess, assets as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Could I get a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Any questions or comments prior to voting? Hearing none will vote on this motion. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to item G three, policy 5120 dot zero one, voluntary student transfer. Mr. Trout.
Yes, again, I'm just, uh, this is the second reading and just, uh, seeking your approval of this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion, reference this policy.
Make a motion to approve policy 5120 dot zero one, voluntary student transfers as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Could I get a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Any questions or discussion prior to voting? Hearing none will vote on this motion. Motion passes six zero. Move on to H one, items of discussion by board members. Anything, anybody like to add?
I'll keep it short. So as I mentioned earlier, had the pleasure of attending the school board, uh, Indiana School Board Association Board Directors Meeting on Friday of last week, getting ready for the fall conference that's coming up in September, in a couple of weeks. Should be a good conference, a lot of things going on there, a lot of good information. The other interesting thing that came out of the board meeting is that, uh, we decided as a board, uh, to not renew our membership with the National School Board Association and just be just associated with COSBA, which is the other national school board association that's out there. There are many reasons behind that, and I'd love to sit and chat with you if you're interested in it. It's just, National School Board Association is kind of, we just felt kind of, we're out of step with them and not doing the same things. Uh, it's a, sadly, a thing that several other state associations have done, and so it's why there's a second one out there and why we're staying a member of that. But I would also mention, uh, that COSBA is, they also have a national convention, and that one, next one in 2026 will be in Louisville, uh, and if other board members would be interested, uh, it would be a good thing to go, uh, just hear what other, what else is going on around the country of schools and have a great opportunity too. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anyone else? I'd just like to, um, I think we probably said enough, but I just want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Peters and Mr. Brimberry. You guys are just incredible, um, the way that you support our, our teachers, um, all, all for every student every day. Uh, it's hard to even let you guys know how much you mean to us, so thank you so much. I know Mr. Brimberry didn't get to say anything tonight, so I, I feel like he should probably chime in with something, but I'll stop him before he does. Uh, if that's all we've got, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, and a second. Thank you, Mr. Wal, Mr. Carl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, Carl, no.